We'll call the Johnson County School System Board Meeting in order for October 26th. Turn it over to Mr. Sayer.
First of all, we'd like to do our student recognition. At this time, we have our golf teams in from high schools. So I'll turn that over to Mr. Halsey and Mr. Todd Connolly.
I defer to Mr. Connolly and let him speak on that. He worked more directly with the kids and whatever, but we're super proud of them. They have actually year boys and girls and achieved some things that we haven't achieved before at the high schools. So, Mr. Connolly, would you like to speak to your team, your players, a little bit?
First of all, I want to thank Mr. Halsey and Mr. Mackenzie for giving me the opportunity to work with these great student athletes and to get to know their parents. You know, that's something that is very dear to me is getting to know each of my students in the classroom. So it's been even better in athletic position as a coach to get to know them as well, too. This year, it's my first year coaching with them, and it's probably been one of the best experiences of my life. We've had a blast. We've had three things that we try to do: every practice, every competition, every time we go out. And that's number one, is have fun; number two, to compete; and number three, to get better. And these girls, without a doubt, you know, they've got better and better and better as the year gone along. Let's see here. The first match that we had, it was a nine-hole tournament against Sheldon Clark, and we shot 251 as a team. I was not very good at all, but we had fun, we competed, and we did get better. So, our second tournament, our first tournament, which was the second match, we went to Winchester and competed in the George Rogers Clark Invitational. And this is when I thought my coaching had come to an end because I turned it over to Dicky Crum back here to go down and take the team because I had the boys in another one. And they go down there and shoot a 4.09 in a 18-hole match. They did really good and placed really well. So I was like, "Well, they're gonna fire me and put it on Dicky then." Then, we go up to Letcher Central, their Invitational, where the region was, and sort of get us prepared for it. They shot a 4.46. Went back a little bit, but it's a lot tougher course, and they finished fifth. So I'm very proud of that. But then, that's when the cream come to the top. My girls shine. You've got Zoe Crum, Ally Windlin, Courtney Collins, Quinn Bowling, and Hannah Varney, which is a seventh grader that couldn't make it to the board meeting tonight. But they went out and shot 4.09 as a team. It was extremely good and became regional runner-up. And they represented ourselves well down at the Kentucky, the Kage SAA Tournament. We got really wet. It poured on us the entire time, but we had fun, we competed, and we got better. But overall, for the year, it's been great with these girls, but I gotta brag a little bit more on an individual. Zoe Crum, she is, let's see here, I wrote all those down. She, this was her fifth time representing Johnson Central at the state tournament. And she's a now great. So, we've got a few more yet to talk about. In the George Rogers Clark Tournament at Winchester, she shot, let's see, 74. Finished fifth out of 82 golfers. And we had Lexington Catholic, we had all the big teams there, so she played really well there. At the Letcher Central Tournament, she won it with a 78. And then that following week, she became third-time regional champion. Once again, everybody. We've got freshman, sophomore, sophomore, junior, and a seventh grader that was on the competing team. So, see you next year. But the boys also, we had one, Will Hadrick, he's not with us tonight. He also qualified, and it's his second year going, and he's a junior. So, we'll see you again next year. Thank you.
Well, Todd, you want to throw a lot of other good things going on at high school in athletics? Kind of want to tell them what they've achieved.
Well, in 55 minutes, our girls will play first-round regional volleyball tournament at Chelley Valley. Tomorrow night, our soccer team, girls, will play first-round state. The regional champs, they play tomorrow night at 7:00 at Graham County. So we want to remember both those teams as they're still in postseason play this week. Of course, football had a big win Friday night, Ashland, a lot of us was there, but that's a big rivalry. Guarantees us another home playoff game and potentially another one beyond that, we think, the way things will go down. Golf team, thank you guys. Thank Mr. Sayer for working with us to get, or not golf, or bowling. We lost the bowling alley, unfortunately, but we got our bowling team up. We've got to deal with Prestonsburg. They had their first match Saturday and won the match overall and actually won every individual competition, every match. They went undefeated as a team and individuals on Saturday. So we've got a lot of good things going on athletically and academically at high school right now.
Also, where's Mr. Young? Is Mr. Young here? Go back there. Go on top of that, your winners here in the last couple, three weeks?
Oh, well, that's been exciting. Of course, we had our fifth and sixth grade football team finish the season undefeated and ended up with the county championship in football. And then, just last Saturday night, our girls basketball team finished their season undefeated, and they're the three-time JCAA champions. So it's pretty exciting over our place as far as things are looking at. You know, we enjoy that, and we like to see those champions come in, but it's been very exciting and we're hoping for a good boys' season. So, we're kind of hanging in there with it.
I like some of those ones, knock you off in that.
Hell, I'm sure.
Mr. Eastep, go on top a little bit about the state football playoffs?
Love to. The seventh graders, they advanced to the regional finals, too, the seventh grade football team. They did get beat this past Saturday against a very good Monts Blaski team, but they had an outstanding season. They improved and proved throughout the year. Our eighth graders, they won, and they will be advancing to the state semifinals, which is this weekend, coming up weekend. They play at Bryan Station at 7:00 on Saturday. They play Mead County, and if we win that game, we'll play in the state championship game on Sunday at, game is set for 6:00. And it'll be the winner of Bowling Green and, probably Bowling Green. Bowling Green and Union, I think, is the other game, in the large school division. So, we're chasing another state championship in middle school football, hopefully.
So, a lot of good things going on, athletics, academic teams, done well.
Academic teams, we've had our second EKC match, can pretty much dominate in this East Kentucky League from that.
As well as middle school doing well Saturday down here in academics. We've had the last couple Saturdays, both of them dissipated. Again, we appreciate all our parents and kids for giving them out and supporting us. We have big crowds wherever we go, had probably as many people at Ashland as I think Ashland did. So, again, great support from our community here. We appreciate all them. I guess the kids are welcome to go if they'd like, and parents, or you're welcome to stay at the meetings if the rest of you'd like to. But, again, we also, our kids go, gone, and we've got to follow a lot of those activities and things. You're welcome to stay, but feel free to go if you need to. Also, this time, we'd like to recognize our retired teachers here in Johnson County. Last week was Retired Teacher Appreciation Week across the state of Kentucky. And I don't think we've ever done this before, but they're a great group, and they support Johnson County schools and a lot of endeavors to come back and reenact here and reenact America Week, Dr. Seuss Week, and help with the blood. We had a flag ad for our local resource centers and things out there. And I think we've got three or four here tonight, Becky and Kathy and Connie and Nelsons. We appreciate them being here with us. Would you all like to say anything? Kathy, I think you're the president.
I will. When the flood hit, I am currently the president-elect Kentucky Retired Teachers Association. I sent a text, yes, that's right, text to the director and said, "I'm okay. I know you've heard that my county is hurt. Please pray for the people in my county." My phone rang about five minutes later, and he said, "Kathy, are there any retired teachers who are wiped out?" I said, "I have been looking. As far as I know, there are not, but my county's in bad shape." He said, "Is the school damaged?" That was his next question. I said, "No, the school is not damaged." He said, "Where do we send help?" I said, "Let me think about that till I know that I'll have the money where we're sure it will do the best good for the children." Talked to my assistant here, I'm the oldest, she's the brain. And I don't tell her that very often, but it was her brainchild, more or less. She said, "Let's work through the resource centers." I called Dr. Wagner back. Within 30 minutes, an email went out to 30,000-plus KRTA members in Kentucky, asking money to come directly to Johnson County RTA to go straight to Johnson County Schools. And in September, Nelson and I traveled across all 14 districts of KRTA. As soon as I was introduced, somebody would come to me and say, "Do you need any more? Is everybody doing well in your community? Thank you for your note that you sent us in reply to our responses to you." And I even received monies then and brought them back with us. Connie was, I was leaving town shortly after the flood for vacation, and Connie said, "Just let the money come to me, and then you can take care of the mailings back out to thank people." She called me first day of vacation, said, "Are you sitting down?" I said, "Well, I can be." I sat down, and she said, "Got over $600 on the first day of mail coming through after Dr. Wagner's response." And a lot of that came from Louisville. And it came from all over the state, the 9,000-plus that we collected. And I could not be any more proud of the retired teachers, not only in our area, but across the state, because our hearts are still in education, and we will continue to give. And I don't know about the rest of you, but Nelson and I love Reed Across America. That's a day that we truly enjoy. So, feel free to call on us if we can help you, and thank you.
I'll come up and give a picture, and I'll read this little proclamation here. "Whereas Kentucky retired teachers have devoted their careers to the education, training, and literally thousands upon thousands of Kentucky youth. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers have retrained and/or provided primary educational opportunities to hundreds of adults in the state for whom for one reason or other have fallen behind in formal education due to job and social skills. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers rendered valuable service in diverse leadership roles in their communities and institutions throughout their careers and continue to render such services at retirees. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers represent the profession which is given the basic responsibility for launching a career, a state and national leader, and for laying the foundation for the welfare of all members of our society. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers have told incessantly to provide the quality of life in the state and nation too often under less than adequate circumstances and for less than adequate pay. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers represent a tremendous pool of experience and training which remains dedicated to the barefoot society everywhere. And whereas Kentucky retired teachers present a long patriotic concern sintry, we provide a dedicated and dependable support to the leaders of our communities and state and nation. Whereas the 2014 Kentucky General Assembly has honored Kentucky retired teachers by recognizing the third week of October as Kentucky Retired Teachers Appreciation Week."
This was actually put through by a state representative who is a retired teacher. They helped us a little bit when we got that down last year.
Next order of business is to approve the minutes from September the 28th, 2015, for our meeting and bills and payroll for October 22nd, 2015. Is there a motion to do so? Is there a second? Say, "Motion's made, the second, end of discussion." All those in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Mr. Rowland, Renovation Report.
Really not much to report, other than we hopefully have jumped through all of KD hoops now, and it's restricted under final review, and hopefully we can get something next week that's a historic flag ad.
If we're reading on that, we'll have all that, we'll submit that KD issue, we're ready to go, place on the docket, but see how your package will come today.
Thank you. Next, Mr. Fairchild.
Yes. At the last board meeting, we spoke about possibility of purchasing a propane bus. I would like to recommend to the board that we revisit the, what you passed about purchasing three diesel. We would like to purchase two diesel buses and a propane instead of three diesel buses. And Mr. Sayer and I spoke with a representative from a gas company, so we think we have everything worked out.
Renovation presented by Mr. Fairchild and Mr. Sayer is our motion to throw up. motions made in second, end of discussion. There'll be no discussion. Call for vote. All in favor say aye. Any opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Fairchild. Next on new business, Mr. Blair.
My name's Darrell Blair, and I'm here to present the audit of the Johnson County School District for the year ending June 30th, 2015. You guys got copies of your audit reports? As far as the independent auditors report, we have audited the accompanying financial statements of the governmental activities, the business type activities, each major fund, and aggregate remaining fund information of Johnson County School District as of and for the year ending June 30th, 2015. Management's responsibility for the financial statements. Management is responsible for the preparation and prior presentation of these financial statements in accordance with accounting principles generally accepted in the United States of America. Auditor's responsibility. Our responsibility is to express opinions on these financial statements based on our audit. We conduct our audit in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States of America, and the standards applicable to financial audits contain the government auditing standards issued by the Controller General of the United States. Opinion. In our opinion, the financial statements referred to present thoroughly in all material respects the respective financial position of the governmental activities, business type activities, each major fund, and the aggregate remaining fund information of the Johnson County School District as of June 30th, 2015. Guys, would you turn over to page number three. This here's a management discussion analysis. I'm gonna go over some of the financial highlights. The net cash balance for the district was $9,136,118 in 2014, and $8,812,735 in 2015. This is a decrease of $323,383. This difference can be explained due to cost of living increases. Second, from 2014-2015 total general fund, revenue increased by 13 percent. Revenue from the state increased 15 percent. Revenue from federal sources increased 45 percent. Revenues from other local revenues decreased by 268 percent. Third, among major funds, the general fund had $31.4 million in revenue and about $31.8 million in expenditures. Five down, the district's total debt decreased by $1,464,78 during the current fiscal year. In last, the district was granting an extension on its current facility plan for four more years during 2012. If you would, turn over to page number six. And what I want to hit on here is your budget expectations. The district adopted a budget with 2.9 million in contingency, which is 7 percent, and your guys' minimum is 2 percent. Guys, would you turn it over to page number seven. This here's your statement of net position. You've got your governmental activities, the business type activities, which is food service. For total cash, cash equivalents, $8,566,161. Inventory, $53,249. Accounts receivable, and I'm just combining all your accounts receivable, and it's $1,664,897. For total current assets, $10,284,307. The non-current assets, capital assets net, $25,931,500. For total assets, $36,215,412. We've got deferred outflows of resources totaling being $1,3,534. And new this year, we've got district pensions contributions subsequent to measurement date under deferred outflows, which is due to Gatsby 68. It's $800,26. And that is the CRS portion of what the employer contributes for the pension. We've got liabilities. Under current liabilities, for total, we've got $3,872,732, which is due within one year. We've got non-current liabilities, total being $21,356,731. And I want to bring it to your attention, under the non-current portion of the net pension liability, this year they made us book how much you guys were underfunded. It's the difference between what your planned assets state and what they should be, in which you end up being short, $6,402,000. And in the business type activities, we had $1,294,000 we had booked for that part. For total liabilities, being $25,229,403. We've got deferred inflows of resources, and again, this is new this year due to Gatsby 68. It's the difference between projected and actual investment earnings on pension plan investments, total being $720,000. And the difference between your assets and your deferred outflows and your liabilities you get in net position. Overall total, we've got $11,269,483. I want to bring it to your attention on the business type activities. If you look at the main totals, we are in the red, $252,335. And all that is dealing with booking that net pension liability under non-current liabilities, that $1,294,000. It's really ended up in the red. You guys, would you turn over to page number eight? This is your statement of activities. I normally don't go over this statement, but I want to kind of bring it to your attention in the bottom portion, where it says, "Net position beginning restated." We restated your prior year balances, and we done that due to the Gatsby 68. Instead of showing the liability, all of it being this year as an expense, they went ahead and let us book it and restate the beginning prior year balances. And we'll cover that again later on in the notes. Would you turn over to page number nine? This here is your balance sheet. I'm gonna go over the general fund because all your other funds is pretty much restricted for a specific purpose. Cash, cash equivalents, $6,230,432. Accounts receivable, due within one year. Taxes current, $325,755. Taxes due input, $1,287. Regular accounts receivable, $125,750. For total assets and resources, $6,693,224. Their total liabilities, $62,940. With the difference being fund balance, overall total fund balance, $6,630,320, with $6,440,330 being undesignated, which means you can pretty much spend that amount on wherever you want to. Would you turn over to page number eleven? This here is your statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, governmental funds. Again, I'm gonna go over the general fund. Your total revenues for the year, $31,415,491. Total expenditures, $31,832,467. With the deficit of revenues over expenditures, $416,976. And we had other financing sources and uses, with the difference being $77,525 use, which now gives you a deficit of revenues and other financing sources over expenditures and other financing uses, $491,451. And those fund balances on your governmental funds, we didn't have to restate those. Gatsby 68 only pertains to any wide savings. Would you turn over to your notes, page number forty-two? This here is your change in accounting principle and restatement describes your implementation of Gatsby 68. Your net position, June 30th, 2014, what we left off with last year on the governmental activities was originally $16,598,806. And where we had recognized net pension liability and deferred pension inflows and outflows, there's a difference there of $5,324,800 that we had to restate, which gives you, restate net position, June 30th, 2014, $11,274,600. And same with your business type activities, which is food service. What we left off with last year when we done your audit, your net position was $724,964 in the black. And we recognized net pension liability, deferred pension inflows and outflows, we had recorded another $1,331,200 net as a deficit, which brings you down to a restate position in the red, $606,236. If you would, turn over to page thirty-seven. This year, we had some findings on your financial statement audit. The first being 2015 dash zero zero one, cash advances not returned timely. Condition, the high school principal received cash advance on two different occasions and never returned money left over in a timely manner. Criteria, all unused advanced money must be returned the next school day to the bookkeeper for deposit. Cause and condition, the principal failed to return the money timely. Effect, $558 stayed in the principal's possession for two months. Recommendation, all money left over from cash advances must be returned the next school day and documented on Form S89. Management's response, principals will be expected to comply with all rules with no exceptions. You guys, would you turn over to page number sixty-five? We have three more current year findings that we disclosed in your manageable letter comments. First being Activity Fund 15 dash one, Teachers Discretionary Fund ended in the red. Condition, teachers at Central Elementary overspent their discretionary account and used activity funds as their own. Going down to the effect, student activity funds were spent on teachers and a fund ended in the red. Recommendation, under no circumstances should activity funds be spent on the staff. Also, funds can't end the year in the red. If a teacher's discretionary fund is overspent during the year, then money has to be put back into the count before June 30th by funds from the staff, so the count will not end the year in red. Management's response, principals will be asked to comply. Second, monthly receipt collections could not be traced to deposits. Condition, monies collected at Port Rel Elementary and documented on the monthly receipt form cannot be traced back to deposits. Effect, $1,518 went unaccounted for and cannot be traced back to the actual deposit. Recommendation, when teachers collect money from students, it should be documented on the monthly receipt form. This monthly receipt form, along with monies collected, should be turned in daily to the bookkeeper and receipt be issued back to the teacher to support amounts received. This money is to be deposited in the school's bank. Management's response, principals will be asked to monitor the bookkeeper's work and make sure receipts are being issued and tied back to deposits. Third, funds were remitted from deposits and unaccounted for. Condition, at Flag Gap Elementary, $97.05 went unaccounted for and not deposited for two weeks. Numerous other deposits have been made during these two weeks for daily collections. Bookkeeper or principal could not provide an explanation on what happened to the money or how it finally appeared in deposits two weeks later. Page number sixty-six. Effect, money was not deposited daily and went unaccounted for for a short period. Recommendation, all money is to be deposited daily for over $100 or by the end of the week, regardless of amount. Management's response, principal and bookkeeper will be asked to make daily deposits of all funds, as filed with recommendation. And this year, I'd like to say that everyone worked really well with me as far as when I was doing the audit, and they provided me with everything asked for in a timely manner. I would also like to commend the board for working within your budget. We did have We did have an increase in federal and state funding this year, but you can't really depend on that every year because the federal and state government is hurting too. So you just need to keep monitoring your expenses and everything should be all right. Any questions?
Question. You mentioned a couple times in here about timely, timely responses by principals. Timely to me and timely to my, two different things. I view timely as a day or two days. What's timely to you?
The red book states the next school day.
Okay. Thank you. Comments, questions?
And I may have addressed this pretty quick, so if you guys get home and decide, well, I wish I'd asked this or asked that, feel free to call me at any time. And that's what I'm here for. I'll be more than happy to sit down with any of you guys if you want me to. I'll answer your questions over the phone, just whatever you guys need me to do.
All in all, you were pleased and everybody worked within our budget and everybody worked with you getting the information you needed.
That's correct.
Very good. Thank you. Item six B. Mr. Sager.
It is, as always, a pleasure to get to come to be with all you guys to talk about good news. I have some assess my friends across the state, and they don't get to have a report such as this about distinguished school systems. So again, it's a pleasure to get to do so. And we are a distinguished school system again based on our spring results that just came in around Appalrene. And it's Unbridled Learning, College Career Readiness for All is the assessment program that we need that Kentucky students are a part of. And with the Next Generation Learner part of it, I always like to give just a recap of how the test results, what it is made up of. You have your achievement scores, and that's where you get your novice apprentice proficient and distinguished scores based on reading, math, social studies, science usually, except not this past year because they're changing the standards. And then also writing. And then your gap scores. And your gap scores come from where they look at any student that is considered to be a gap student, such as poverty students, such as students with disabilities, bigger areas, some different minority groups. Also, our college career readiness, which comes from your ACT scores, comes from the career certificates, different types of assessment that behind school. And this past year also the middle school with the explore exam, your graduation rate. And all of those, those five are combined, that makes up the Next Generation score, which counts seventy-seven percent of your total score. And then also, and there's a listing of what they just mentioned to you, but also twenty-three percent comes from program reviews. We have program reviews at all of our schools, in arts and humanities, practical reading, writing, primary, elementary school, and we're getting ready to add global competency, world awareness as well. The state department is saying that that has to be done as well, so we'll be adding that one. Schools and the districts are classified by their overall performance after that achievement score, gap score, growth score, graduation rate score, and the college career score are all combined with the program reviews. And then you get either distinguished, proficient, needs improvement rating. And there are one hundred and seventy-three school districts in Kentucky. Fifty-three of them were considered as distinguished, seventy-three are proficient, and forty-seven, only forty-seven are identified as distinguished school systems. And so Johnson County, we are thirty-ninth overall, which does put us in one of those forty-seven. And so we get to say and get to boast that we are a distinguished school system. If we look at the ties within those thirty-nine, it would put us to twenty-nine if you count the ties. And then also, we have one hundred and twenty county school systems, we have twenty-sixth county school system. And in looking at those ties, we have twentieth county school system because there are a few of them that tie with the same score. This is a listing of the one hundred and twenty, of the top twenty-six county school systems. I put this on here just to show that there's very, very few in the eastern Kentucky area. And I think that's quite impressive that we are amongst the top county school systems across the state. Our local district performance when compared against others around us, I included this one because our score of seventy-one point one, which puts us at the distinguished level, is very close to the one above us that may have seventy-one point nine. And then we have a county school system above us with a seventy-four, and then Hightland and Pennington with a seventy-six. There are seven hundred and twelve elementary schools across the state, and then I listed how many of those are distinguished, proficient, needs improvement. There's three hundred and twenty-seven middle schools with only seventy-five of them being distinguished and seventy-one proficient. And then two hundred and twenty-eight high schools with ninety-two of them being distinguished, eighty-two proficient, fifty-four excellent. Our Johnson County, we are distinguished with seventy-one. Central Elementary has a needs improvement with almost seventy. Flat Gap with seventy-one point seven proficient. I have to tell you, we have a battery still out on Flat Gap, and their score, if we think it'll come up, and he's awfully close to being distinguished right now, so we're really hoping for that. Highland Elementary is proficient. And the high school, proficient. The middle school, proficient. And then our three distinguished schools, Mead, Porter, and WR Castle. And I have to take a moment to tell you that Central Elementary is just three tenths of a point from being up to the next level proficient. Flat Gap right now is one point one away from being distinguished. Highland Elementary is three point eight from being distinguished. The high school is two point two points away from being distinguished. And the middle school is two point eight from being distinguished. And then Mead retained their distinguished status as did Porter and as did WR Castle. Also, I am required to talk to you about delivery targets. Every school and district has delivery targets that they are to aim for. Our proficiency gap score targets, we did show improvement in elementary, middle, and high. Elementary gap score is moving from fifty-five to fifty-eight. Middle school fifty-one to fifty-two. And the high school thirty-six, point nine to forty, point six. And if you have any more questions about wanting to know more about how achievement scores are gathered and gap and growth, because it is not easy. And if you were to ask me what all that formula is, I just hope you don't ask me. Quite difficult. So what I want to say is congratulations to all eight of our elementary and middle and our high school for doing such a good job and for letting us boast once again that we are a distinguished school system. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank all the principals. Six C, Mr. Sager.
Do you have a list of community persons who serve on our local planning community? I mean, we have to hide that table for two weeks and only have three people submit that. So we ask you to approve those three people who serve on our local planning.
Is there a motion made? Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made, second, any discussion? Shall be no discussion, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six D, Ms. Sager.
This is the annual agreement between the Johnson County School System and the CAP Office, which governs the Head Start Grant for our area. And it includes all the details about each partner's responsibilities in carrying out the function of our Head Start Grant. We would like to ask that you approve that, this year's agreement.
Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? If not, we'll call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Sager. Item five E, six E, Mr. Sager.
Yes, we'd have a board minute, most of the presidents will go into the board and discuss this and will abide by all the rules and regulations and guidelines. It's about probably a hundred pages I'd printed out here to you. So I didn't print it out, but we asked you to do that. Just say a little.
Motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Sager. Six F, Mr. Hobrook.
In your packet, you will find a copy of our fit offer of assistance for this year. Of course, this is a matching offer of assistance. I'm asking the board to approve this this time.
Motion's made, is there a second? Second, that motion. Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed?
Again, in our budget, we present to you earlier in the year, we put money in there to purchase a maintenance vehicle and a transportation vehicle. They're getting pretty run and ragged. I think Ronnie and Scotty will both will tell you that, that we need to start some type of plan as we go forward in the future, making some type of way of doing some of those things in the future, some type of process to do that. So we're not stuck here and being the last vehicle we purchased back two thousand four.
Two thousand fours, I believe.
Of course. We've lost our vehicles for about five years old, and we'd like to go forward and start purchasing one each year for the ones that are part of us.
Thank you.
That's your pitch, you did that out.
Motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six H, Mr. Sager.
Again, we ask you to approve our K-Vic membership for this county school year, and I can't tell you how invaluable that has been to the district. We've got to get that back in the team and mount some of that with the R.A. Grant here with all the things that our teachers and things do. So we ask you to approve that for this county, this school year.
Thank you. Motion move, second. Our motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six I, Mr. Halsey.
We have some high school trips on there. We would ask you to approve FCC LA, November the nineteenth through the twenty-second to Indianapolis. That's their national cluster meeting, national conference. It does say charter bus, but the bus is provided by the state of Kentucky, makes regional stops. Now, part of their money goes to help cover that cost, but that's provided by the state of Kentucky. Makes stops across the state, takes them on to Indianapolis for the national conference. And then the academic team has two requests, November the sixth and seventh, which would be a one-night overnight to Hart County. And then in February fifth and sixth, again, a one-night overnight in Lowell for the Academic World Quest, which is something new that we've requested participation in this year. Then softball for spring break. Previously, we had requested, you guys had approved, a trip to Myrtle Beach. But in looking at it, talking with the coaches and the baseball coaches and boosters, seems to me if we're both traveling at the same time, we're going relatively close to each other, maybe we could look at traveling together and do that a little more cost effective. So that would be a change to the original destination, and they would be going to Myrtle Beach along with baseball during spring break, if that makes any sense. Just trying to look a little more cost effective at things. And then student council has asked for consideration for a May the fifth through the seventh, which would be a two-night student council trip to New York City, contingent upon them funding that.
Thank you.
This is Burton, and I request the approval for. She'd like to take the academic team to Emerson County for an additional trip. Previously, I approved one, she'd like to take a small group back, just a quick recall group back for the tournament that we have in November the fourteenth.
That overnight trip?
Yes, overnight.
And Mr. Young?
Ours is a second grade, we'd like to go to the Glass Factory in Milton West Virginia on November twenty-third.
Is there a motion to approve? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six J, Mr. Sager.
About or not, we've been working on some way of going back and recognizing all of our former superintendents and board members to find a list that are in your computer and things we went back and made. We hunted for two, three days here. A lot of hunters. Backs of all minute books and things, it was actually impossible to find some of the dates when some of these people started and stopped in that. But we were back until, what, eighteen sixties or somewhere along those lines. We just like to recognize those people, maybe like hearing input about how we'd like to do that on a wall here or a plaque or something by listing the names. If you've got suggestions and ideas about how about doing that, we're all open to that.
I think it's a good thing to do, to make the community aware of the heritage that we have in our community, in our county, with educators, not only today, but how some of the educators today are affected by educators in the past. So I think it would be a good effort and appreciated by many for everybody who receives it the best way. I think it would be open.
Opened ideas and suggestions. Maybe take more of the walls here and put in some, maybe some wall like the hallway does over at the high school and put a plaque up for each one of them or open suggestions and any other thing you'll have. Maybe front lobby instead of down here. I don't know what the. Maybe think about that to him now, maybe next board meeting, and we come back, maybe have a plan and ideas to recognize those folks, because they've all been, many of the board, many of us, because teachers here and things, you're all here to handle children here in Johnson County School District, so.
Great idea. So prior to the next meeting, we'll come up and get a list of different ideas and look from there.
Or I guess even my staff here's got an idea or suggestion about that, where, you know.
More creative, huh? Very good. Thank you for that.
I would do appreciate everybody helping out doing all that. It's been a long time trying to figure out some of the writing from years ago and taking some time, because I really wasn't sequencing some of it. It might be your honesty going back and looking at it, but I'd be interested.
Item six K, Mr. Young.
We've got two fundraisers that we'd like for to approve. One is for a craft fair November fourteenth, and the other is our annual book fair that we'd like to have the week of November sixteenth.
Thank you. Second, any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six L, Ms. Goble.
Since the last board meeting, we have considered a local compensation premium and a recommendation that we renew with KIMI. We've actually decreased the premium date, our loss runs seem really good, and our bond number's good. And we'd like to make the recommendation forward.
Thank you. Motion's made, is there a second? Motion's made, is there a second? Any discussion? No discussion, call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six M, Ms. Patton.
A few of the faculty and directors are interested in submitting a substance abuse prevention grant, and so they just seek issue.
Thank you. Is there a motion to do so? Second?
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion, we'll call for vote, all in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Six N, Mr. Burge.
We have an instructor who's been asked to participate in a research study with University of Kentucky. It involved her and students that she works with. It would provide parental consent by the parents and student and the approval of U.K.'s institution review board. And our board members look at it and they think it's okay as well. So we see your approval to allow that to occur.
Thank you. Is there a motion to do so? Second? Any discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Also, you've got your superintendent's personnel report, and if there'll be nothing else, I'm up for a motion to adjourn. Second? All in favor? Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all for coming out.